All right, we'll call this meeting of the Greenfield Planning Board to order at six oh one on. It's today is October seventh.
August.
It's August seventh, thank you and. This meeting is being recorded by the planning board. If any other persons present are recording the meeting, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Don't yet have anyone online? And anyone here recording? Not seeing anyone, thank you. As far as public comment, um, public comment may be allowed at the discretion of the chair. If you want to be considered for making a comment, please alert the chair by raising your hand. Okay, we'll do a roll call of members. My name is George Palumpsas. I am the chair for the moment and. Want Jeff?
Jeff Salzer, Vice Chair.
Tom Bledsoe, alternate.
Vic Michelle, a clerk temporarily.
Hopefully.
And I'm Sarah Bronson, member.
Oh, there you go. And uh, we hadn't heard from uh, Peter. Does anyone know? I hadn't seen, I hadn't seen. And again.
No word from him or Erica.
Erica, okay. All right, um. So just uh, pausing to think of whether to uh, I'm gonna wait a few minutes to see about whether we might elevate you or whether. Once we do reorganization, uh, might elevate you, Tom. Um, just don't know if uh, Peter was gonna arrive.
Right.
Okay, so um. The next item is the annual board reorganization, the election of a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and a clerk for planning board.
You don't want to approve events.
And that's the next item after that. On the agenda, the reorganization usually comes first after we just identify the members of the.
Okay.
The board. So the process for this is um, we start with the chair. It's self nominations or other nominations. Nominations do not need to be seconded. Usually check with the person who's nominated. If it's another nomination, if they want to accept the nomination. And uh, then the discussion is more than one nomination and um, then we would vote.
We can nominate people who are not here.
Say again?
People who are not present cannot be nominated for an office.
That's interesting, um.
Is that, that's a rule?
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just guessing because you said we had to ask them if they'd accept it.
Oh, yeah. Typically, we would ask someone if they want to be, if they want to serve.
If you hadn't talked to them in advance, huh?
Um.
Are alternates? Voting members in this discussion?
If an alternate were elevated, they would be able to uh, to vote. Um, right, they couldn't serve in a position like that, but they could.
Right, they have to vote on the. But whatever's in front of the board.
Right, yeah, definitely. Um, okay, so um. So I will uh, Victor, just for your, are you checking to make sure no one's trying to get in?
Trying to see if there's anybody else or not, but.
I'll pause for you.
I don't see anybody here.
I wanna make sure.
It's us.
No one gets excluded, okay?
And it is definitely on, right?
Yes, it's good, right.
I'm assuming everyone got into the link. I don't assume we have the same problem we've had before in the past.
Should we check?
I don't know how you check. Do you check? I can log, yeah, see if you can get into the.
Great. Thank you, Jeff.
So why don't we move the other? Should we move to our items instead?
No, we, we haven't do this first. It's possible Peter's trying, you know, if it's the problem, it's possible. He's just trying to participate remotely, so.
See me on there? Oh, I haven't hit the button, hold on.
I'm hitting the button.
It's like it was working.
Are you in? You're on?
Yeah.
Oh, there's somebody, oh. It's all right.
Okay.
Somebody's getting in.
It does work.
All right.
I guess.
That was appropriate.
Jeff, are you able to get it?
And you go from the calendar?
In the calendar, let's make sure I'm in the right date here. Seventh of August. I hit the Zoom link.
She's in the red. I don't know why she's in red. She's not completely in yet. She always has a participant, but she doesn't seem to be. In.
Jane, can you, if you can hear us, could you unmute and just confirm you can hear us? Just trying to make sure our remote option is working.
When I click the link, it tells me the meeting is scheduled for January second.
Oh, is that old link again? Try, try going under the bottom thing then. If you go back out, it then asks you for the numbers.
Oh, the access code and everything?
Yeah, yeah. We're back to that problem.
All right, well, if that works. Saying hell.
And you're going from the calendar?
I clicked the Zoom link on the calendar. I didn't try the access codes.
I Jane came. It wasn't an email somewhere, I don't think. It's in.
I, but it should be the calendar.
I understand, sometimes see, because the agenda at the end says their links and things, but.
Right. Okay. If we agree.
If it goes on a machine, you go, just another way.
Calendar is the public's door to.
Yeah.
Access.
This, yeah. Neil, where's that?
I think you have.
I went in and I had no trouble getting to that and getting the documents and reading the documents. So earlier today, I didn't try the link, but. Access the documents that were referenced.
There shouldn't be multiple ways to get in. It's one of them failed.
All right, we have public comments, so it might be a problem tonight if people can't get in.
You guys say that person can't hear us or?
Have you seen Jamie do?
Trying to text.
Amen.
Oh, getting warmer, getting warmer, huh?
You got in.
If he used, he used the other way though, right?
I typed in the code as opposed to using the link. Clicking the link is not the same as, it's a different meaning.
People, people are getting there. No, they're not. If they're just using the code, they're not, if they're just using the link, they're not getting in. Can we do our business and then postpone the rest? We can do our organization, right? That's gonna be public comment on that. There are more efforts. Now, these people are just working, people can't get in, Jane and Eric.
They're in, they're in, they're in the same way that I am. I can see the meeting.
Like.
Can you talk to yours?
Can you? Oh, I'm, you, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be echoing, I don't think.
I turned off my speaker.
Hi, Eric. Thank you for doing that. We're just trying to make sure that was your people are getting access. Eric, can I ask you really quick?
Yes.
Were you able to click on the link or did you have to put in the access codes or?
Yeah, I had to put in the, the actual access codes into my phone. The, the link on the website is to, to a January meeting or something. It doesn't really link.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, um, so, so there is access, but it's not by the easiest method possible. Okay, well, let's carry on with our board reorganization. So um, and we can assume Peter would have the capacity to get in if he were going.
He would not.
So, yeah. So I am gonna um, as the current chair, I'm gonna elevate you, Tom, to a voting member at this point, so um. Uh, Victor, you can just note that. Great, okay, so uh, floor is open for nominations for chair.
Would you like to chair?
Is that a nomination?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'll nominate you then we can discuss, yes.
Okay, um.
Victor has agenda.
I'll nominate Jeff.
Thank you. Jeff, would you be willing to serve as chair?
I would.
Good, and I would be potentially willing uh, to serve as chair as well, um. So any other nominations?
This is just for the chair.
Just for the chair.
Just for the chair.
For the time.
Uh, discussion.
Should we, hey? Is there a, is there a routine on sort of the, how long the chair and then the vice chair, or when a vice chair elevates, or if a vice chair doesn't elevate, or is there any? We, we were all new last meeting, the last time, which is why we all nominated George because none of us really knew what we were doing last time. Well, now we all had a year under our belt. We kind of got a flavor for it, so. That's why I'm suggesting Jeff, he's been the vice chair, he's had to sit in at least three or four times. Some meet, some interesting meetings too. I survived a uh, open law, open meeting law event, and so I think he's got a little bit of credit on the.
Yeah, well, from my, you know, my experience in boards, very obviously limited, but I've enjoyed working with all of you and have had a chance to work with Jeff and honestly, Jeff's chaired actually important meetings. That I've been here uh, over the summer and those times, so. It feels like a good time to make a transition. You've, you've been here for so long and you've done so much and you got so many other things on your plate. If anybody's willing to step up, it's probably a good idea, you know? And you obviously have a great background for it, Jeff. You both are really good with the public in my mind, and seeing you engage with people and building very trust. And uh, and you obviously have subject matter, you're, you know, you're kind of an expert in the field, so we're lucky to have you, so. Makes sense, and you know, you've contributed so much to our, over the years, and you still are, you're in a lot, a lot of different stuff, so. Thank you for all you've certainly have done, well, from my, my time here, but. That, that seems to make sense to me, so I would sort of be comfortable.
According to the minutes, yeah, we need to have a, a motion and a second for each nominee. So I know Sarah moved. For George, did somebody second?
I would, I would say that that's inaccurate. Robert's rules does not require a second for.
My cause, my cause is all up there.
Again.
So, I'll, I'll comment. I just want to say, um, I think, uh, just generally, I think it's um. It, it's not good to have the assumption that, that um, uh, someone continue in a role indefinitely or something like that. I know when I was on, first game on the board, we had a long time chair and that person was gonna be. You know, in, in a few years, they're gonna be leaving. I had proposed that they switch and become the vice chair to give the, the vice, the vice chair for two years a chance and. And the vice chair didn't feel comfortable stepping into that, and I think it would have been helpful to do that. I think it's good to have some changeover and I think it develops leadership. Um, and when I, you were here when I became chair the first time, it was just three of us, right? You weren't you here then? When you, you had just started?
I don't remember. My first meeting was January twenty twenty four.
Okay, but um, when, when I became chair, it was very reluctantly after Charles Roberts has left and there were just three of us, and obviously obvious choice, but it was very reluctantly.
This is the second time around.
Yeah, yeah, I had been, I had been vice chair for a number of years with Charles, so um. I'd be happy to step back from that. I'm, I'm happy to do it. I feel comfortable with the procedural stuff and with the engagement with the public and stuff like that. But I'm happy to step back from that, and I, I'd really appreciate Jeff stepping in. It hasn't been an intentional um, fostering your development by my not being here a number of times. I served that.
That's your plan. We're seeing if he was up for it.
The, the biggest uh, thing I want to say is I think that um, and I think you um, in your comments, I think at the last meeting uh, that I, I saw, that uh. Biggest thing for me is around the um, uh, philosophy we have going forward or continuing as far as public involvement. And, and the reason I say that is I know that Charles set an example for years of being really flexible about public involvement, and I tried to carry that on. And at the recent um, uh, decision by the, uh, about the open meeting law complaint, it was such a telling um, uh, decision I had cited before. Um, from the Attorney General's Office. Now, I'm just gonna read it again, that, that open meeting law does not require a public uh, body allow public participation in its meetings. Um, but says it can't speak unless permission with the chair. But we do however encourage public bodies to allow for as much public participation as time and circumstances permit. And that to me really hit a chord. I, I, that's kind of the philosophy I had had all along and that Charles had embodied, but I thought, boy, they're really saying we should be flexible, shouldn't be. Necessarily. Restricted to a um, you know, a, a small comment period. We should be willing to be flexible and so I think.
Jason, I can't get any sound.
Is this Jane?
I am.
Can you mute? They're not getting sound, so they're not hearing.
Mm.
Mute her.
We'll fix that.
So I, I just wanted to say, I think whoever's chair, I would, I would, as a planning board member, I would want that approach. Because I think it's really vital to have this. I know it's challenging sometimes, but I think it's really important to have that. So that, that, that was just one. Uh, comment I wanted to make about um, the approach with public engagement.
I strongly support that, George, because I, I'm, you know, I've not long been on the government side for a long time. I've been in the private sector. I've done a lot of boards and have been chairs and done a lot of governance on nonprofits and businesses, really. Many businesses and, but also not straight nonprofits, uh, government a long time ago, but I'm not used to the formality of government in some ways. And so the limits amount of time and not just being able to have a back and forth, so I, I'm more comfortable. That's what I've been, so I support that very much as well.
I do too, just great.
Too restrictive otherwise, and if it gets out of hand, we can pull it back, but I'd rather encourage it and see where it goes.
I, I, the only thing I would make on that is, you know, if we ask the question right on, does anyone have one comments on topics on the agenda? If no one raises their hands, so they have no topics on the agenda, then what I would do is I would wait till the end of the meeting. And say, does anyone want to speak on something else? Because we've been allowing people to speak on anything they want to, which takes up our time trying to do our business. But we can do our business first and then open the floor. And if it takes till ten o'clock because they have things to say, then that's what happens to us. At least we get our business done. That's the only thing I could comment on. If, if it's, if it's not on the topics on the agenda. Then it shouldn't be at the beginning of the meeting, it should be at the end of the meeting, so we get our work done.
I definitely agree one hundred percent. If someone's gonna come to a meeting or tune into a meeting, they should have a chance to speak. Especially, but I would agree with you, Victor, if it's on the agenda, because every meeting can't be an opportunity to run out the clock. On the same topic over and over and over. So if it's not on the agenda, it doesn't seem, we, we can't talk about it, then it's not, it's not to be discussed.
Right.
But if it is on the agenda and there's a line out the door to speak about it, then we'll have to sit here for a long time and listen. But it should also be a duration of time that doesn't, the other thing that I've experienced in my job and also here. Is that the comment period can go so long that we have no energy to do our work when it's not. And people are leaving and missing the actual discussion. So the discourse has to, I mean, that's important, but so is the agenda. There has to be a balance, that everyone who makes the effort to show up in a meeting should have a chance to talk.
And structurally, I don't think it works to clump it all at the start of the meeting. I think you look at a city council meeting and it's, you know, endless. And I think what we've tried to do, I know Charles and I try to do, is fit it in organically, you know, sometimes. And it takes some deftness and some negotiation and stuff like that, but sometimes someone will come up with something in the midst of something. And you don't have to, it's discretion, you know, and you might say, well, wait till the board has their discussion then give. And it's not a watching the clock, but you know, just using judgment about how long or you have wrapping, wrap it up, stuff like that, anyway. I might go on longer about that, but.
Are you able to put to other business or something like that on the agenda, or is that kind of too open ended, so therefore can't do that? I mean, is there a way to have a, at the end, if someone wants to talk about something else, you just put it to the end and you see if there's anything that anybody wants to comment on, then you close the meeting down?
Or you just put public comment, or you put public comment at the bottom of the agenda, wherever, wherever you want to put it. But I think we all agree, we want the public to, to be open to, to be able to say something, but we want to work within our parameters of doing our business.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, I just say, it's also the public's business, so we're trying to find that blend where.
People, as you said, they want to hear the deliberation and the decision too, so they don't want the thing to go on so long that they can't see the whole thing.
Yeah, and hear from each other.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the time, that just, it's obviously important. So given that.
Vote.
Yeah, wanted to uh, suggest we vote in the order of the nominations, so all in favor of Jeff as chair? All right, that's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you very much for serving.
Thank you.
All right, nominations. Nominations for vice chair. Floor is open.
I was gonna nominate Peter, but again, he's not here.
Hmm.
I'll nominate George. We know that he's uh, yes, capable of leading the meeting and I certainly don't want to be vice chair, so. And maybe Victor could be, but I don't know if you'll.
No, I, I want to be a member for a change, just sit and listen and talk, so I don't really want, so I, I don't want to be clerk for sure.
Oh.
But uh. You know, so you guys better start me thinking about that, um, yeah.
A lot of things.
Okay, uh, well, um, you headed off my uh, nomination, Sarah, uh, because that had been my intention, but you're saying you would not be willing to consider that.
No, I have a baby. Life is too complicated right now.
That's a tough thing, yeah.
That's my excuse.
It's a backup, right?
Okay.
It goes in, let me.
All right, so uh, okay, we have one nomination and I would be happy to serve, support our new chair, so um. All in favor of me as vice chair?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous as well. All right. So uh, I think Victor is suggesting that we override that uh, approach of not nominating someone who's not here.
I don't know. Right, yeah. Well, we should, I mean, I. Well, I would like to nominate him, but again, I can't really successfully wind up if he decides he doesn't want it. Go ahead and vote him in.
So what, what I know boards have done before is when you have, you don't have full uh, representation, is you just table. Uh, a nomination till the next meeting, when you might have a full, and you have the opportunity to check with someone directly if they might.
Well, we just voted him in, so I don't think we can go back.
Say again?
But you still give up for other positions.
So we don't have, we can wait on clerk till everybody's here, if we want to.
Until Peter's here.
Yeah, we could consider rotating the clerk position or something like that. I know some boards do that. Of course, then it becomes more complicated. People don't do it.
You know? You could, Victor, Victor, you could nominate.
Good, Victor, you're real good.
You could nominate.
Get the participant.
You could nominate the one full board member who's here, it, it doesn't have an officer position yet.
Well, I'm not gonna nominate Sarah. So the one, I heard her, all right, I heard her.
I would prefer an absentee clerk. I could probably do it one month if I had to, if it were rotating, but I, I don't have the time to sit down and do the minutes every month.
It's a good idea. So I would table it till next month.
Should you have a vice clerk also, just? Like Peter's, that means I hear several meetings, it'd be great if he can do it when he's here, but. Eric also isn't here sometimes. Is there, is there a backup role for that, or is it just whoever wants to do it that day? Whatever, we can.
I don't know the answer to that.
We'll talk about that.
Yes, I really.
Probably discuss this.
Sure.
What it should be is that somebody doesn't show up, someone should step up and take their minutes.
Okay.
That's, unless, except for you, because you're the chair, but you may have to take.
I'm here by myself.
This, this role is particularly bad when Eric is not here, because you have to then do minutes.
Eric hasn't been here for a while. I think he's kind of getting used to not having to do you. So.
That's okay. I mean, you know, he, he's got a lot on his plate, so why, why have a clerk in a, in a board if the clerk's not gonna do any work, so.
So I understand completely.
So we're agreed to table the clerk.
Yes.
Vote till next month, okay?
It's helpful, thanks.
Mr. Chair, you are, you're meeting.
How does it change immediately?
It's all set. You can, you can delegate, but it's, it's your meeting to, to facilitate.
Okay. All right, next order of business, approval of meeting minutes of July third, twenty twenty five. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes?
I have a question. I can't really vote on it because I wasn't at the meeting. Well, I looked at the meeting minutes. I see that the board approved a medical, they changed the name of what a bed is, but medical. And we approved it by right. In the town, and I thought we did something with medical clinics and did not allow them to be approved, but did we vote on?
This was a, this was a different issue. We were, um, this is about veterinary.
Right, this is the woman who came and spoke because she, she had a proposal for cherry rum. And what we discussed was initiating a process, I thought, to make a change in the zoning ordinance.
Well, they changed the definition. It says they changed the definition to medical clinics and centers, like.
But you can't just change it. Can't we just change it without?
Well, it's a recommendation to council to vote.
That's what I mean. That's, that's what it was. It's a process that we initiated, so.
So again, the, before you, but in our motion to the council, we said we allow it by right. And I thought we did something about not allowing medical clinic by right.
Early on.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
I, I just want to say, this agenda item is about the minutes, not about revisiting.
I'm not.
So, but you must make sure they're accurate.
Well, I'm just asking a question. Yeah, I can't vote on them anymore because I wasn't there, so I'll shut up. It just seems like we did something.
I'm just saying if that.
Okay, I understand.
I want to be put on a future agenda.
Okay, I'll make sure it's correct, I guess, I know which.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna make it known that I questioned the minutes and we'll do something about it later on.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, that's written.
I think, um, George, you probably, you weren't, you didn't call a planning board meeting at six oh two, because I don't think you were there, were you?
Correct, you, you, I was not there.
But I'm making. Is that the formal? No, 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 so right here, in the minutes, I don't believe you. It says you weren't present, but it says you called the planning board to order.
Okay, so I'm, I'm making a motion to approve these. That would be part of the discussion.
Okay.
So I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
And okay, just for note, I think uh, George is trying to get at, usually it goes with Robert's rules, usually.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Fine with that. I would just, I just make one correction. I think whoever called the meeting to order, I think it was you, Jeff, you were the chair.
Good catch.
That's all. You caught that the time before.
Yeah.
Okay, you're here. We made you chair, vice chair, and clerk.
So we have, we already have five people, so Erica will be arena alternate today.
So do you want to know if there's other discussion?
Yeah, I have something when Victor's done writing. All right, so on the A and R action item, if it will not required. Want to make sure, I said that, that's because that's my neighbor. I said that I have no, I disclose that that was my neighbor's house, that I have no financial interest or any personal interest in. In that residence.
You did too.
I'm gonna go with the last topic down here.
Our action item A. No material interest, whatever the term be for in that.
One James Street.
Yeah, in that.
Excuse me, stated to get no material interest.
Um, just to clarify Victor's questions, the motion was just to, it wasn't to change any. Um. What was allowed by right in any particular district. It was just to kind of expand the definition of medical clinics and centers to include veterinary under medical. Um, so it wasn't changing any. Thing about the districts. Which had been discussed at the previous meeting.
It says that.
Eric was gonna bring that to counselor. You would have updated on that, that, that's on where that stands if you were here, actually.
Okay, so I got two corrections in the minutes so far. Who opened the meeting and then Jeff's statement about not having a material interest in the property for action item A. The sixty James Street property. Anything else?
Okay, yeah.
Two things, I'll just point out that that um, uh, item that Victor was expressing some. Interest and curious about will be coming back for a joint public hearing, because that will be coming back for course. It'll be another chance to review and reflect on that. And uh, that as far as voting, you can vote on minutes if you weren't there. Uh, you can either vote just because you believe this integrity to the process and you trust the process, or as I did, you watched the video and you know that's reflects accurately what happened.
But either it's, is permissible.
Yep, absolutely.
It's enough, thank you. Glad you vice chair to help me any day. Brush up on my.
He's the problem, Jeremy.
Yeah. Okay, any other? Discussion on the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes with the.
As amended.
As amended. Anyone?
Or are you asking for a motion?
If I have a motion for that. Second? All in favor?
Aye. Thanks.
Unanimous. Okay, moving on to public hearing, uh, application of the estate of Anna Batinsky for a property located at. Three seventy Colerain Road, assistance tax map, R twenty seven lot ten, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district. For special permit, sentence protection two hundred seven dot eight and two hundred eight dot three of the zoning ordinance. And obviously allow a flag lot. And obviously allow a flag lot at the soapy. And we think that some people from the applicant are here. You want to tell us about this?
It would be, just imagine it would be good to come up here so that Michael can catch it for the, for the public.
Give us your, your take on what you're trying to do as we look at the documents.
So.
Your name.
Anna Batinsky.
For the address.
369 Colrain Road.
Thank you.
So we're trying to split the property. It's been the family farm. It was still in my mother's name. My brother and I have been running the farm. She passed away and left it to the two of us. And we're trying to split the property. The house was left to me. We have the barns where with the house. We don't have enough runage to separate the house with the barns and still leave the property in the back. So that's why we're trying to do the flag lot. That's really what it amounts to, what we're trying to do.
I have one question. Time for questions?
Yeah.
Okay, um, your flag pole, is there, my concern is that the angle that you've put in there, and I'm just trying to think of fire trucks or anything else. I don't know what the purpose of the lot is, but in the event that something happens to where you're expecting public vehicles to go down there.
For the flag lot?
The actual piece that's coming off of Colrain Road, you've got that sharp angle in there? I assume it's gonna be a driveway or an accessway?
Yes, it's just the access to the property.
Okay, uh, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not trying to presume, but it looks like a very sharp all that access drop. Could be, could you make it kind of more a curve or something that works?
I mean, they did, the original, it was sharper and she did, okay, turn it a little bit there slightly.
Okay.
Angled it a little.
I can say that we got, uh, comments from city staff forwarded to us from Eric Torog, and he said that nobody had any comments. They would have assessed it for, for that sort of thing, whether or not it meets public safety standards and, and that kind of thing.
Okay. I, I had a question, um, and it, and it relates to that. So I didn't have a chance to look up the original deeds and the, and the, and on the county, Franklin County registry of deeds. So I'm assuming that angle was because of that existing parcel. Yeah, just because of this thing. This was pre-existing.
Right.
And that's what we were saying.
Your house.
I understand that's what you're talking about.
Yes, and that's your house. That's your part.
360 to our Colrain Road.
Yeah, unfortunately the addresses aren't on here, so it's hard to know what's what, but, um, yeah, I had the same reaction about the angle also, public safety, but you're using this for farming, correct?
Yeah, that's what it is.
And, and long-term planning? I mean, I'm just going to put this out there because we, we keep losing prime farmland and Colrain Road is, is full of prime farmland. That it would be great if you do further subdivide this or sell it for whatever that you keep residential towards the street and keep the, the back open, preserve that farm. If you, if it ever comes to that.
Yeah, well.
Are you shaking your head? No, you're still farming. I see your beautiful shirt, so it looks like you're invested in your farm. But anyway, for future, your, your children, your heirs, whatever, um, because there, actually there's a brook here also. I'm, I'm sure West Forest, the hydraulic in this site, I mean, it looks like it's prime land, so I would hope that. So for me, I have no problem in subdividing and doing these flags and keeping everything to the rear because that was, that's a mechanism, a planning mechanic or survey mechanism to preserve that back for farming and do residential along the road. A lot of towns do that and so I'm, I'm in full support of that, but I would just do everything you can in your estate planning to make sure it stays farmland. So.
So you're carving out seven whole four acres from the overall farm, is that right? Why so much land? If the goal is just to preserve, to peel the house out?
Well, so we're splitting the farm, so on the other side of the boat, across the road from that, there's more farm land which is gonna stay with the, with me.
Okay.
So I'm gonna keep the buildings, the house, the land on the other side and down along by the swamp pool.
Okay.
And about eight acres behind the barn.
Do you share the barns between the, the barns or?
We, you know, we've been working it together.
For, yeah.
I mean, that's
Right.
what we've been doing. But it came down to being able to split it.
Yeah, yeah, you have to somehow do it.
Neither one of us want buy the other half.
Right.
Do that. We each wanted to have something from.
Yes, yes. Yeah. And it also makes sense to follow the brook, so, I mean, that was intentional.
Uh, but. Yeah, a part of the.
That putting, putting that, that boundaries line is kind of all.
Some of the brooks.
Yeah, cause you can't really do it.
You'd be keeping the farm stand if you plan to open that back up for now?
I don't know.
You're all missed.
Health issues are kind of what we're starting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're still doing the hay and, you know, in lease some of the land.
Yeah. Okay.
Great.
You, correct?
Yeah, as far as, um, I think to address Erica, what you were saying, just looking at the, in the, um, part of the zoning ordinance to speak specific flag lots, and I'm sorry I didn't catch Eric's, um, uh, indication he wasn't gonna be here, cause I would have, I would have asked him about this specifically. But, um, uh, some portion of the regulation says, once approved as a flag lot, such a lot shall not be used for other than a single-family use or subsequent, subsequently be subdivided unless as part of an approved definitive subdivision plan. And it says plans submitted under this section shall be the same as the plans submitted to the planning board under the subdivision control law. Um, and the planning board shall not endorse any plan under the subdivision control law for the purpose of creating a flag lot unless a special permit has been issued for the flag lot. So I was a little confused by that. I don't know if, when you guys wrote that, if you had a sense of that. I worry about the timing. If, um, uh, you know, the flag lot gets approved and then subsequently a subdivision plan could be, uh, uh, submitted. So, I don't know if you folks have a understanding of that process.
No, that, that can happen, but that's why I made my comment about as, as possible preserving, but I don't know if the 55 feet is enough for subdivision.
And that's what I think Victor was.
The frontage, yeah.
Considering as far as if there were
Yeah.
a need for.
Yeah. Access written sort of as if it's gonna be a single-family home on back of the slot, you know, period.
Well, you're talking about just it being farmland.
Right. So I'm saying the, the bylaw is written like it's a single-family home.
Well, it says unless part of an approved subdivision. So.
Right.
My reading of this is if you have a special permit has been issued for a flag lot, which we're being asked to issue, um, then you could come back with, uh, saying you want to have a, um, you know, a.
Some, a subdivision.
A subdivision.
Sure.
Does anyone think that's inaccurate or is that?
You could come back.
That's my, that's my reading of.
We would want, once, once we get, we can't do that at the same time as applied by maybe.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I.
I'm not, I'm not discrediting your plans or your statement. I'm just saying to you, I understand from one of our, understanding of our responsibility.
Are we just using that in the.
So section please. Sure, so that's, um, section 200 dash 7.8 flag lots, and I was reading persons L, M, and N.
Thank you. So thank you.
Stay the frontage is up to.
Okay. Is that?
Uh, it depends, like.
Oh, 99.
So it's.
Oh, it's 99 of my most recent deeds. My age is. Yeah, age nine.
But 200 dash 7.8. Flag lot, you think of it as a hole in the flag and that's looking here for the flag pole.
So.
Just, Jeff, I just want to comment that, um, everything we say at this table is supposed to be audible to the public, so just want to make side conversations.
Yeah, no, I was just remembering that. Frontage. So just, just clarify there, the frontage requirements increase, the more development you have. So for multi-family dwelling lots, it's a minimum of 100 feet. And in, depending on the zone, um, and then it goes to 140 and, and 200. So it, and then you have wetlands set back here, so I'm, I'm sure when you subdivided this, you took this into consideration. It's farmland, so.
Thank you.
Um, wait, we had a comment from the public.
Well, we're waiting for the, I think Jeff's waiting for the presentation, then we'll go to, over to the public here.
Anything else?
I think that's covers what we're gonna say.
Okay, and any, any other questions? For this gentleman first? Okay, and we had some other folks in the public?
One come up here.
Yeah, so if you can come up here and say your name and your address, so we into the microphone?
We want these three people.
Lisa Jean, 364 Colrain Road, some of the little 0.47 figures that is there. So, um, I know you were, ma'am, discussing about the road frontage for the flag pole. What is the required minimum road frontage for the flag pole?
50 feet.
Okay, and then, oh, yes, there. Um, so like you can encourage farmland and stuff, but there's really no guarantees as to what would end up back there behind my house, correct?
Well, right now it's, it's farmland and you, because of this small frontage, you're gonna have a hard time if you want to change that, the whole process.
Change what? What would I want to change?
No, if some, if somebody would want to do a big multi-family subdivision here, there's not enough frontage according to the bylaws.
Okay, so if there was something going back there, um, obviously that would have to go through a whole nother approval process.
Absolutely. We're just approving the flag.
Just the flag.
And whether or not we approve the flag lot, a subdivision plan could still be brought forward.
Sure.
Could subdivide this all up in all sorts of ways.
It's completely independent.
Yeah, this doesn't have any bearing on that.
So it's just.
This does not guarantee.
We're not approving anything other than the little taxes.
Okay, um, and the current, the road frontage currently, you said the minimum's 50, and what is it? Do you know?
55.
Okay, and so when you were talking about the sharpness of the angle, you were talking about coming in off of Colrain Road or this here?
Yeah, coming in and making that turn.
Dog leg.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And there's wetlands across two.
Okay, that's all I had.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we can only do so much. We can't attempt to regulate some hypothetical future use on the basis of this type of application.
Oh, right.
Want to speak? Okay, come on up. Name and address, please.
Sandra, at the 786 Colrain Road.
On the west side.
With the next door, so you're on the south. That's how, right, north.
Oh, to the north. Oh, this, yeah, this is on the west side, obvious.
So I don't have any objection to what they want to do, but I do have objections to the surveyor. Um, I thought she would be here tonight. Um, we spoke last fall and, um, I have a lot of things I could say, but mainly I'm being taxed for several years for the dirt road that she has them owning. She surveyed that they own it, but I'm being taxed for it. It's the north. South of me.
Okay, a little dotted line right there.
It should, that, that's something for the board of assessors.
Pardon me?
That, that should be taken up with the board of assessors.
I have.
Okay.
He shrugs his shoulders.
Is there a right-of-way easement?
I'm, I have a right-of-way and I thought they had a right-of-way. It's pretty confusing. And then, um, what's the other thing?
You're saying that the survey is inaccurate?
Um, I'm questioning it.
It looks like the road is on.
Because she, she, when she met with me last fall, she made some comments about the way she surveyed and I just haven't had time to try to pursue out it.
There are some pins set. So there's a pipe in the tree and there's a pin. Pins are set.
She put, she put a.
She set the pins?
On Colrain Road that was never there.
Oh, the survey, okay, okay. I mean, that would be something, but that's almost like a title search and you have to go back through the old documentation, which is all at the registry of deeds. That's something you can do. That's one thing.
I've had copies.
Okay, the taxation thing, that's with the assessor and I, and you can ask them, I'm sure they have a form for acreage, what that, what they charge for the acreage based on acreage, what the valuation of your land is, and you could sit down with the assessor and ask them to. To make sure that that's deducted from.
Is the building that it leads to, where, where is that? There's a building that that farm road seemed to lead to.
Um, is that their shed, I think in the back?
It's.
I don't have one right back here. It's.
I see four, three buildings on this area and only one on the drawing.
That's theirs, not mine.
Is that the only access to that shed?
Sure.
So here's, here's the road.
Yeah.
And there's the shed.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's how you get to it.
It's, um, the, um.
That will be on the back.
It has to look like this on this line.
The deed or the map I have shows, um, you see the bridge, the brook and the bridge way back.
That's good, maybe you can see it.
Have it. You can't see it on the screen there. We're just looking at an aerial.
No, it's just, it's just indicated there's, there's a bridge.
So, um, the surveyor, we walked out and, and she showed me where she put a pin in front of the bridge. And, um,
Okay.
Then my land goes over toward theirs and then back again.
Right, yep, you can see it on the ground, it's on the back, and it jogs.
Looking at the wrong road.
So you're, you're saying that the road, cause she's showing it, she's showing the road mostly on the side of the Batinsky farm?
Yep.
And then, and then it shifts a little bit as you go west, but just towards the end, and then it shifts back. And then it, yeah, I mean, that, that road kind of jogs back and forth. But if, if it's a taxation issue you're concerned about.
It's a survey also, so.
Well, the survey's a legal document. It should be accurate. The only way to check that would be to ask another surveyor to come and do a survey and, and check it. And then, you know, take the width of the road, have the surveyor tell you how long it is. So, um, you could deduct the area and ask the assessor to deduct that or whatever.
Just move the road to the other side a lot.
Oh, yeah, you could move it.
I want to find out about it. I want to find out about, um, I want to have the survey checked.
Yeah, I've, you can always hire another surveyor.
We can't do any of that.
Yeah.
Also, I think the, for what it's worth, the, the flag lot delineation doesn't impact that line.
No.
The, the line.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't follow.
So they're not moving the line between your property and their property there?
Right.
Hanging the line over here, this is not related.
I have seen now.
Okay, so I just, I'm just trying to separate that issue from.
You know, so if they sell it, then. You know, so if they sell it, then, you know, I want it to have it all, I want to know for sure before it gets sold.
Yeah, and you can, just for both parties, it's because I had a similar dispute on a property I owned once, this. Survey and the registry of deeds was right, but they had an understanding. Of something else, the the neighbor, and we had a survey come out and. It ends up that they were in the same situation as I was in on the other side. So anyway, it's like we clarified boundaries and we've put it in writing. There was an additional thing that was added in writing and that was then registered at the registry of deeds, so you reaffirming. Whatever understanding agreement about right of ways, where everything is, and it's at the registry, so it helps clarify, but the I would recommend. Hiring another surveyor to get an idea on.
She told me last fall. When we walked out, walked the road. That she determined their border by starting on my frontage. I don't think that's the correct way to do it.
Well, the the.
I have a hundred and forty seven feet of frontage.
Right.
Land on the other side of me a few years ago, and there's a lot of issues.
Usually what surveyors will do, because there's a lot of old, I mean, Greenfield has been surveyed a long time. They go back to the oldest point.
I know.
That's fixed in the ground.
Seen the.
Then they work their way eighteen hundreds on all this property. Right, and then they work their way out, mostly these points are fixed, trees are less reliable, but things that are in the ground either a stone. Monument or a pin. That's so, and then they they reconstruct, they have to go out very far to find those fixed points. And check everything, which is actually described verbally in a deed. That you you start at this point.
Tell me, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
I said she started serving by. How much frontage I had, so that's it, that's all I'm saying, I'm going to pursue it.
Okay, I think just. Our decision on this, we're not even making a decision today, it's just a public hearing, but. The question of whether or not the flag lot. Should or shouldn't, or is or isn't allowed, doesn't impact that line, that's.
No, I don't have any objections to what they want to do, um, I just want to. Be sure about the borders.
Eric made some suggestions on who to talk to and keep chasing it down and.
And outside.
Figure it out.
I didn't, I didn't catch your address, I'm sorry.
On three eighty six.
Three eighty six, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, anything else from the public? Anybody on the line, uh, virtually that would like to say anything? I know Eric is not gonna, he's next, but um, it's okay.
And we can, by the way, Jeff, we can make a decision on this, we have a public hearing, I can.
On on the fly, okay, even if it's not on the agenda.
Well, it is, it's inherent in the public hearing.
Okay, then. Okay, so I will close the public hearing. Six fifty three P M. And now ask if there's any interest in a motion to go ahead and. Approve the special permit application.
I will to approve it.
A second. Sorry. Discussion.
Is it worth going through all the criteria? I assume that the planning department did that, but there are. No, A through N. Conditions on approving fly lot, I don't know if it's worth going through.
So we have Eric's memo, the the official opinion of the Department of Planning and Development. And he has no issues with the proposed plan, so.
I mean, I I reviewed them, it seemed.
Okay.
I think I would defer to Eric on this if he were here and he's here via his memo.
Yeah, and I also.
And that gets written up and in the approval and it has to be.
Yeah, they still have to check all the boxes.
Yeah.
Building department will make sure they follow those rules. Okay, uh, so all in favor of approving the special permit?
Very bye.
All right, passes unanimous. Thank you all for coming, you could stick around and then we're moving on to the next thing on the agenda.
Thank you.
Item.
I don't know how you're just learning that, huh?
All right, next item, approval that required plan endorsement for lots of fifty four Factory Hollow Road parcel. R zero five twelve, zero six eighteen, submitted by Eric Feindell, and we have. Quick survey here to represent the. Hey, also, Ken, if you want to just, there's a very elaborate survey here. Have you muted, Eric?
I did not mute it.
I did too.
He's working on it.
It's quite a parcel.
Still muted. Or maybe, Victor, maybe you need to. Meet him.
Was that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah, um, it's a busy plan, so, uh, but actually what we're doing is is fairly straightforward, um. If if, would you like me to walk you through it?
So we also don't have the benefit of. Eric being here to let's.
Oh, yeah, right, exactly, exactly, um. So this is a property owned by the Stotts family, um. Uh, over in Factory Hollow, uh, they actually own um parcels on both sides of the Fall River. Um, their. Their property is made up of um actually seven tracts. Um, this plan represents, I think, maybe five of those, um, and. What they're doing is they're going to be putting in uh majority of the tracks in their deed into conservation restriction with uh through the Franklin Land Trust. Um, but in order to do that, uh, they have a, um, they need to reconfigure the lot line between their house lot and the rest of the property. Um, because the land trust does not want the tennis courts, obviously. Um, so if you were to look at the plan, um. Just below, um, if you go to the big um CR two label and then go south. Um, you'll see there's a tract line there and that's labeled A B. That is the current property line uh between. Tax map R O six lot eighteen and tax map R O five lot twelve. Both of those lots are in common ownership with the Stotts's. Um, but what they'd like to do is move that line. Down south to the line that's marked C D. And that's going to run sort of at an angle northeasterly. Um, and they're going to move that line down to there, and what that's going to do is that's going to increase the area of. Um, R O five twelve. It will reduce the area of R of, um, I'm sorry, it'll increase the area of R O six eighteen. It'll decrease the area of R O five twelve. Um, and what it will do is it will create an exception lot, if you will. Um, around the house, the tennis courts, which will not go into the conservation restriction. Um, it does not affect frontage, um, it really just affects. The location of the line between the two assessed lots. Um. So that's all, that's all that we're. We're asking for the uh for the endorsement.
Boy, that's simple compared to this.
Yeah, yes, yeah, 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 we know, this this was pretty straightforward, and I think we just. Um. It just, it's just, just necessary for the conservation, it actually isn't even necessary for the conservation restriction, but the land trust likes to configure the lot such that if. If people want to go ahead and sell. The accepted land, then they don't have to come back to you at that time and do it.
That's right, sure.
You know.
What what are, what are all these parcels being used for currently?
Oh, currently, they're, currently, they're, you know, they're, they're vacant lots, I mean, they're. I don't know if you've been out there, but there's. Trails.
I got up to their front driveway and I decided, eh, I'm not gonna keep going.
Yeah, I don't know, uh.
I ran into one of the brothers, I came back.
It's, it's just, it's heavily forested, forested, it's along the river, um, there's currently some, you know. Hiking, some hiking trails out there, I believe one of the um, the Stotts's does a lot of uh mountain biking and so there's mountain biking trails, especially on the. On the Gill side, so um. It's, it's really, it's not currently being, you know, used for much more than recreation at this point. Uh, there was an old, if you go halfway up the river, um. You'll see there was the old International Paper Dam that was removed back in um, two thousand fourteen. Uh, so all of this was international paper land at one point, including even if you go further north, the of the Boy Scout camp and. And such. So um, it's nice, it seems like a nice uh. Nice place for the, the land to end up after all the. Usage history there, so.
You said it's going into the Franklin County Land Trust?
Yeah, correct, Franklin Land Trust, yeah.
Franklin.
Yeah.
No county, no county, Franklin Land Trust, thank you.
Yep.
Eric, um. Do you know, is there a plan after this uh goes to the land trust for public access to the um. Reconstituted area there?
Um. I I don't know, I don't know, I don't represent the land trust, so I don't know um. What their plans are, sometimes they do uh provide public access, um. I think it depends on what the agreement is between them and the landowners, um, I don't know that. Um, as just as the surveyor, I don't know what that agreement is.
The reason I ask is we're just. Finishing up approval of a revision of our master plan, which includes. The hope to increase access to the Fall River. Uh, eh, on the Greenfield side, so.
Yeah.
It's lovely that it's all being preserved.
Yeah, sure, but it would be great if the, but like you're talking about hiking trails and stuff.
You, it's private land from the road at least.
I think the, uh, yeah, the only issue would be just that, you know, if I was the landowner, it's really going to come down to. Um, whether you want people walking through your your dooryard or not, um. I think there is uh the potential for access from the Gill side if somebody wanted to, um. Uh. Well, you know, construct a bridge or something over the Fall River and spots, there there are, there are places where that could potentially happen. Um.
Thanks.
You know, like a walking bridge or whatnot, um, there's also the possibility of access through, um. I, you know. At some point, if Mackens did something with that property, I don't know, but.
Thanks, just curious, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Richard.
So, is there anyone, yeah.
I'll make a motion to uh endorse this uh A and R now that I understand it.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
One of the most interesting A and Rs I've seen.
Yeah, I think, I can't imagine how. That it would violate that Eric would, Eric Torog would would say, we need to worry about, you know, Eric has looked at this and. It it, you've been in touch with Eric for to.
Yeah, I did talk to him, I did talk to him when I dropped it off, he he, you know, Eric seemed to think that we could handle this through the assessors, um. I I I have not heard of that, so this, the traditional method would would be, even though this is fairly straightforward and simple. Um, uh, we always just do it with any A and R, I I have to look into. That he he said that there was a way to to make the applica, if it's just a common ownership lot line switch without any sort of frontage changes. But. Um, this seemed like the safest way to do it, so.
He didn't object to doing it this way?
No, not at all, no.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Compliments to whoever drafted the plan, I thought it was. Well done, and I, because I did go out there, I ended up going driving around and coming down to Gill and then walked around, but. I was able to find my way. Thanks for the plant, so.
Oh, great, thank you, I appreciate the comment.
Compliments.
Yeah.
So all in favor of of. Approving the approval that required?
Endorsement.
Endorsement, endorsement, endorsing?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, and then.
I move to have the chair.
Yep.
Sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, so we'll, I will go get this signed once we get in touch with Eric. For again. And that's in its five or six copies and over that.
Great, thanks, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night, yep.
Okay, last item is. Continue discussion, planning boards continue discussion of proposed master plan chapter updates. Specific focus on the vision, goals, strategies, and implementation items of the land use chapter.
Does anybody know if this first section that we kind of finished reviewing the last during our last meeting? Um. On natural and historic, natural, historic cultural resources, is that, has that already been submitted? Because I wanted to add something.
My recollection from hearing and watching was that it was decided not to vote on it at the last meeting and to. Um. Uh, because this says continued discussion of proposed master plan chapter. Updates um with specific focus on a land use chapter at this meeting, and then there was going to be a vote on both chapters at this meeting. That was my recollection, though it's li- only listed under discussion items and not listed under. Action items, which I thought was the intention, but it's not listed on the agenda under action items.
Okay. It's got a note from Nancy that she was trying to get into the meeting.
Oh, no.
She would be, she's been joining us at these meetings to give us more context on.
Right, right.
And her note to use the codes.
I did it. All her others have gotten and using the code and she should. Do the same, I just. Maybe give her just a minute, uh, see if it comes in and we can pull up the. The chapter.
A lot of new. Well, maybe I should wait to make this comment, but this um. Under land use, the majority of the. Actions are new.
Well, we were in the. In the other as well. Right, in that, uh.
Yeah.
Natural.
That's true.
So I might have spoken out of turn. Uh, Erica. Getting out of chair mode, um, but you would, uh. Because you had asked about reverting back to some of the. Former chapter. I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I think we. So it's one of the things that Eric Torog said last time reminded us that. This document has been through a lot of process, a lot of time, Nancy has demonstrated, you've been on the committee as well, right?
Did you want me to respond?
Yeah.
So this uh, this went through, I'll just review the process again, it went through the the um. Uh, students at the Conway School, and there were four members of the um, uh. The um, uh, S G S C Master Plan Implementation Committee who um worked with them. Uh, and they mostly completed this this document, and then mostly it was the um. Uh, the, that subgroup of the Master Plan Implementation Committee that completed this document with the implementation right for. And then this was vetted by the entire implementation committee. Um. And then it was coming to us. Um. I think this is, I mean, this is an impactful document, uh, I know in going through this last chapter, I found multiple errors. And um, things that, you know, are are already accomplished that need to be removed and things like that, or things that. I think are in a section they don't belong in, things like that, and I think this is our. Final chance to, because we own this, is to. Clean it up or, you know, uh, improve it, um, so I think it's, I don't think it's disrespectful to the. Uh, the effort or the integrity of the former work, but I don't think certainly we want to rubber stamp it, and I think people were, you know, recognizing that, but I think. I think, and I I agree with having heard the comments, uh, at last one's meeting, we don't need to in read through. Line by line, and I appreciated hearing that people say, oh, yeah, this is our document, and so we were, we can read through it line by line. Outside of our meetings, obviously, and I'm sure people have done that, um, but um. Uh, just that, you know, we want to have this as fine tuned as possible to represent this town and to.
Yeah.
You know, shape, shape things going forward, because it's meant to be a really quality guide to, you know. The town's future, so.
Eric in the last meeting, um, gave me a sense that it had been vetted more thoroughly than that, and like. If it's finished unless you wanted to add something, not that it needs wordsmithing and changing almost like that, ooh, don't do that. He almost had a heart attack, I thought, when we were like.
Right.
So it felt like it was a little more done than maybe, but you're in it, if you're finding mistakes, you know, I, I'm not at that level, so I don't know.
I heard. I heard Eric just respectfully just just disagreeing with the chair at the last meeting. And so I'm respectfully disagree. I know he was getting impatient with it and stuff like this. I think I think, you know, you don't wanna go.
As any dude is absence here today.
I I don't, you don't wanna be overly sluggish. I agree with that. But but we do wanna be, do our due diligence. And so that that's what I would say is that we we're the final better of this thing. So.
Um, takes a lot of sense to eliminate errors. Yeah.
And in your discussion.
Errors, sure.
About uh the the industry and and innovation. You added last time. It was great.
Right.
It's an over big first time.
I have another ad.
Yeah.
I wanna throw this out there for Ben, but I'll wait.
Procedurally, I think if if there's an error, we should fix it. If there's something important that's missing, everyone modify, we should fix it or modify it. But not to say we shouldn't get in here where we need to. Uh, but we can just, and if we just pick the items up as as they come, you can go through our notes and the items we wanna focus on, we can talk about it. Otherwise, trust that at least most of the work is is well vetted and and very thought through.
So I have comments for the second part, but the first part, um, and I, for some reason, I thought it was gonna come up in the the second section, um, but it didn't. So in natural, historical, and cultural resources under four, I'm wondering if we could, this is ensure that residents can access town parks, rivers, water bodies. If we could, if it makes sense, I'm putting this out there to everyone, to add something to the effect of creating pedestrian access that's well um, indicated with signage or something to poet seat, because poet seat is the symbol everywhere. For Greenfield, you see it on our gateway entrances, welcome to Greenfield. But if you're downtown Greenfield, you can't get to it and the winding road up to it is not very safe for pedestrian. It is within pedestrian access and usually people are hiking up to 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 the top of things, like to have a walk. So can is that, do you think that makes sense to add that somewhere?
It's referenced in the write-up and it references wanting to improve access to poets.
Right.
But there's nothing in here.
Yeah, it's not in there.
Yeah, I appreciate you raising it, because I live right around the corner from there and I actually go up there a lot. You know, I walk or drive up that road or bike.
Yeah.
And it's like a super wide road and there really could be easily access. And I'm thinking if you walk from right downtown off Main Crescent now, you know, you can be up a poet, you could, it's like a fifteen minute walk.
And it can be scenic, nice walk.
But when you hit the end of mountain, it just sort of disappears. Sidewalk disappears and you just have no idea where you're going and it's dangerous. So, yeah, it surprises me that there's it's basically so inaccessible. Uh, even though it's right there, cause it's in very walking distance. So I would support adding something. So where were you thinking that's would go?
I was thinking in four for access.
Is this under?
Sure that, yes, N H C resources for ensure that residents can access the towns, parks, rivers, and water bodies. And I would just add that in there. Pedestrian access to, I mean, here they're.
I would say pedestrian and bicycle.
Yeah, pedestrian and bicycle. I mean, we talk a lot about F R T A and other, I mean, there is a little bit walking distances, areas within walking distances in like four point two assessed weather, but I I feel like we need, yeah. This is not for everybody, for not only environmental justice areas, but visitors to town, town residents that we maybe it's we study.
She's definitely be, she's definitely be in four.
Huh?
Should be definitely in four.
Yeah, maybe we study the development of a, you know, walkable pedestrian access to these areas, a map that we hand out uh with signage. I mean, maybe we put it in.
Just stay aligned to and areas of 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 historical interest instead of spilling out a place.
Yeah, no, no, it's in general, but pedestrian access.
That's already in there, right? It's have access.
It's not just historical, it's recreational.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what.
Well, then it's already covered. If it's recreational, it's already covered. Cause I think recreational is listed, right? So it's a recreational area and it's already in four. You're wanting to spell it out as a specific place to look at. That's like saying, you know, the park on the corner. You know, why are we, why are we putting it in specific?
Well, George, George, this last time this came up because it's talks about access of Fall River and Green River, but then there's actually nothing to do. Then it's just ironic that this thing comes up to us, you know? Do you remember that last time you raised that concern? Well, we were just talking with Eric about it, yeah.
There's nothing to do, so.
Well, maybe there is.
Maybe there is.
Yeah.
Maybe there is. Um. Well, is there?
You know, it 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 also ties into having this lovely accessible, attractive downtown. I mean, it it goes two ways. You know, people who are up there, maybe they wanna walk downtown or may, anyways, whatever. I mean, I'm I'm focusing on that poet seats because a lot of people who don't know anything about Greenfield, they see the tower. A lot of towns have towers, a lot of cities have towers. They leave, they don't even know anything about it. And it's a really precious spot up there. Um, it's like the wedding photo shot spot. And every town needs one and we need to toot our horn a little more and having a kind of nice pedestrian signage way, follow this path will get you there, similar to bike trails. Also next, a a safe bike path up there would be nice. That's all. I just, I don't know where to put it, but that was my first guess was in four.
I see.
Are you talking about creating a way to get there or promoting it?
Well, there is, right now, there is not a safe way to get there. Once you get beyond, once you get to the bottom of the, what's it called?
Bottom of Crescent.
Bottom Crescent, yeah.
When you hit mountain, it's all, there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, and it's I I don't feel safe riding up there and I don't feel safe walking up there. A lot of blind curves.
When you come down Crescent and then it turns and then the exit Highland Park comes in. But right down there, there's no sidewalks. You're out of sidewalks when you get down to that part of Crescent. And then it turns and then becomes mountain road and it goes up all the way.
Yeah.
And there's no, so there's nothing there. Just two road cars.
And they they go very fast.
Yeah, so it's sort of that that shoot has no pedestrian or biking. It's just a road.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be on the road. I don't know who wants it land to the side of the road. You know, maybe it winds its way through, but it would just be nice to have some way to get up there. I've I've always asked people, how do you get up there if you're just walking? Without putting your life in your hands on that.
Um, for what it's worth, the in in H C, number one, one point one, implement the twenty twenty one open space and recreation plan. And that document has a very long list of very specific things like that. I just did it work.
Was it in there?
Both each of the fifteen times. So I didn't get through all of them yet.
Okay.
But I I would guess that the intention of putting the reference to that plan is so that that can kind of be the for the amount of, you know, the very long list of specific things, so maybe check and make sure it's in there. And things that might not be in there, we could add to our plan.
So then the only thing I would generalize it and say is access, you know, because we have access via public transportation, I would say just via pedestrian and bike trails.
It says, make needed improvements to poet seat Rocky Mountain Ridge, such as investigating opportunities to improve pedestrian safety and pedestrian access to poet seat and Sancho's head from Maple Street to Rocky Mountain Road and improving connections to other open spaces. Psychic trails. That's in the, that's in the open space plan.
Okay.
So I agree with you one hundred percent, but I just don't want to be redundant.
Yep, yeah.
Right, right, alright.
I think, I mean, you need it to be in this plan so that we can then point to it and say, hey, we said we were gonna do this.
Yep.
Let's do it. But so I think maybe go through the open space plan and make sure it was done relatively recently.
Yeah.
I fur cogged, but.
I agree. Good point.
See if there's any missing there and then we could.
Okay.
Append it.
Alright.
Thank you. Good comments. Alright, so for land use. Very quick. Did anybody, was I guess I should just ask if there's anything specific? We can make, we can our way through the the sections that start with land use, want anything in that area, that zone that people had commented.
Just wanted to check, we've tried to help Nancy get on.
Yeah, I'm checking my email and she hasn't replied. So this was, she emailed me a while ago. I didn't see it, but.
She called me.
She did? Okay.
Yeah. But obviously I don't have my phone on.
We should, uh, I'll check in with the clerk again or.
Should we email her or?
I did. I just told her how to get in.
And she hasn't responded.
That's right. Maybe she just get up for field check later. When she pops in, we'll, we'll.
Can come on.
Maybe we could. I hate to suggest this, continue this discussion. Once we have everything that we wanna say, maybe we could, you know, give Nancy a chance to discuss at a future meeting.
Yeah, I mean, my sense from her was she didn't have, she was there to answer questions.
Oh.
So I think if we have a question and we feel like we need her input, we could table that. But she's, she's not gonna change anything. And she's, I think representing this is what she would like to see. I adopted, yeah.
And I I don't think she was expecting us to check, hey, are you okay with this? She was just.
Right.
She was just wanting to offer clarification if we had questions for her.
Right.
Um, and I, and again, we don't have it as a just action item, so I don't think we're voting on this. So anyway.
So we have another one more chance. Yeah.
Yeah. So you wanna just ask, you know?
I think let's go through, so land use one to the first goal. Cultivate a lively, attractive, and accessible downtown environment. So just within the strategies, implementation, actions, under that goal, did anyone have any anything they wanted to edit, fix, or adjust?
Got a couple of simple ones. Under uh one point three, the third um, this implementation action, a very simple one, uh, it says investigate the use of a bylaw. Uh, we don't have bylaws because we're a city. Bylaws are towns, so it should be investigated use of an ordinance for vacant commercial property. And they use bylaw because the example they give, the Arlington vacant commercial property registry, which I looked at and it's interesting, they have bylaws. So those are the ordinance.
Okay.
Um, and then.
Shoot.
Uh?
I was just joking.
And then two down, uh, the first one under one point four, just a word missing. Uh, seek funding for the oversight of downtown cleanup. Um, and the one just below that, I think this is from the point of view of stakeholders, um, support and fund decorative flower boxes, plantings in downtown, including maintenance and walking uh watering. I was hoping Nancy was here for this because I believe the Greenville Garden Club does that already.
They're stretched thin.
Sorry?
They're stretched very thin.
But don't they, haven't they had a history of doing that?
Yeah, but they're, so it doesn't happen.
There are plantings downtown that have, you know, there's one by the post office I walk by all the time. I'm not sure where the other ones are off the top of my head, but um, I'm not sure. I think those are individually sponsored by businesses, but organized by the garden club.
I didn't want to disrespect the garden club by not including them if they're already.
Oh, I don't think that came through at all. That's not what you're saying. I'm just saying that I know they're stretched thin in there.
But do they still sometimes do that?
Yeah, it it, I'm, I'm not the person to ask, but my sense was that it's.
We can send it, take that out though.
I know, I would suggest adding it, but we can check.
As a stakeholder.
Yes, that's under under stakeholders.
Yeah, I I understood that.
Yeah, the garden club and the stakeholder. Is that what you're saying?
Evil garden club. Yeah, there's garden clubs.
As a stakeholder, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, just to, just to honor their work. They've been doing this for years, is my understanding. Maybe they're, you know, having trouble doing it, but I I didn't want to.
Yeah.
What section is that under again?
I'm sorry, that's um, under one point four, the second implementation action.
So, but the first one had a missing word. This one has a missing stakeholder.
Right. That's all I had on that.
Wait till the next one, Paul. It'll be bigger.
That's all I had on that page myself.
Okay.
And that, and the kind of overarching theme of one point four was help with maintenance and explorers would explore ways to make program financially sustainable. Um, because part of that is we're asking a lot of the businesses and we're asking a lot of the same group of volunteers, so I guess that falls into that. I don't I had one, one thing about um, kind of with signage and a green field kind of brand branding thing that if we want to be asking for some consistency along Main Street or that, like we have like lamppost planters all the way up and down the street, so we have uh, I I don't know if we wanna have something that kind of reinforces the quote unquote Greenfield downtown brand, which doesn't really exist yet, but once we finish our complete streets upgrades, we'll have lots of opportunities for planters. And has everybody seen those plans?
Seen which plans?
The complete streets, the paving planned and the new layouts of Main Street, yeah.
I wasn't asked about that and where that stands and.
There are tw- I got a twenty five percent set from Eric. Um.
And we don't have to talk about it a second, but I was just curious where.
It's it's in process, but he said twenty twenty.
Do we look at it? No, no, send.
The Department of Transportation.
Yeah, Public Works, D P W.
No, it's the state that's funding.
State is funding, but D P W is also involved? No.
But the decision, decision to go angle versus parallel, all that, I mean, who decide that? They're deciding that.
The state is funding the project and they have certain parameters about what they'll fund, what designs they will fund and what designs they will not fund.
It's also based on existing width. So it's between forty and forty five feet is the paved area. And between the buildings, it's between ninety and ninety five.
I I don't need to take a nap.
Talking about planters, right?
Yeah, no.
I know. Can come back to this another time. I was kind of curious where the design planning was for Main Street and it it seems very relevant to all this planning, because it's something that's gonna really happen. So the, but.
So the planters on poles is just your idea? That's not?
Uh, it's it's me, not my, my own personal idea. I'm just saying there's so many other things you could add to this, but to make it to reinforce our downtown commercial area to have a little more, more coherence from one.
It it's not something you've heard someone else propose. You're bringing this up in this room, but you haven't heard someone else propose it or something. Okay. I'm just trying to clarify, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I'm always wary of ambitious projects. You're saying the garden club is stretched thin and stuff like that, of things that are organic as far as sustaining them.
Mm-hmm.
But it's downtown is is a brutal environment for trees, plants, obviously. And uh, so you know, cause sustaining trees in a healthy way is challenging in that environment. So I'm, you know, you know, trying to be not overly ambitious in that setting, so.
Just to clarify, my point was more in having a consistent aesthetic that reinforces and unifies our main central downtown artery. Cause right now it's a little bit of everything. It's some of it stripped with our setbacks and car dealers and garages and stuff. And so just to slowly that we take steps in having a really solid downtown pleasant street to walk in.
Land use one point three.
I I, yeah, I mean, it would go in that, but the idea of just having something.
Funding, uh, to first facade improvement program to aim building owners to make facade improvements. I was sort of curious about that, considering there, you know, there's a lot of forum for improvement on those facades. And it's a little bit what you're getting.
Right.
Um, and I was, that's a new one. George, is there much talk or excitement around of the challenge of doing uh facade improvements and getting businesses to do facade improvements?
Is there? I I'm not sure.
Not there yet.
Um, we don't have to worry about whether or not they're and you you can be infeasible and it will get around to it at some point. This is, this is.
I just don't know what the history is around it. But I only raise that because it's something close to what Erica was saying.
I think it's, and in my opinion, if you put all these together, it's getting pretty close to what Erica's talking about. It's not stated and and quite as as concisely, but it's it's the undertone of of this section.
Yes. I mean, it, when you look at, you know, under one point three, you know, you you know, use the state senate code, that's a low bar. But if you look at the the Arlington vacant property thing, registry, that has some uh teeth to it, because it it, if that were to be implemented as an ordinance, it requires uh property owners to register. It requires them to um report how they're trying to promote it. And it it requires them to uh pay into a um certain amount of money into the system. So um you know, there's a uh, it puts some pressure on them to uh try to do it. And also, you know, this is obviously trying to get them to have the next implementation action is suggesting trying to have temporary, you know, users, you know, um, in there.
This is an important section.
Yeah. You're talking about the.
Yeah, yeah. Here, I'm gonna sum it up more succinctly.
Yeah.
Design guidelines for downtown.
Mm-hmm.
That we just, that that sums it all up. That would take in all this stuff, landscaping of, you know, our our sidewalks, that's planters, that's benches, that's lighting, all that stuff. And and design guidelines, how facades are treated. And maybe we even talk about a design review process for any development and new building and signage in, I know there's signage process right here. There's a signage approval process in Greenfield or no? For signs, for, is there a, do you have to get approval to put a sign on your building in Greenfield if you're downtown?
It depends on, I mean, you get, have to get special approval if it's. It depends on, I mean, you get, have to get special approval if it's outside of the.
Outside of the parameters.
Outside of the parameters.
But otherwise you can do what you want. Nobody's reviewing those.
It's 10 by 10. You can do whatever you want on a 10 by 10.
Anyway, for, for our downtown, we're trying to reinforce our downtown and part of a successful downtown is. Having a personality that's unique to a downtown. So maybe to sum up all these things, I'm kind of incoherently throwing about. We, under one of these things say, um, study the development of design guidelines for our downtown or a main downtown commercial streets.
You'd put it under one point one. Yeah, because it's in there, it says investigate whether form-based code is applicable. So you're talking about.
Form-based code, a little different.
No, no, let me finish. You're talking about an overall design vision. And so it would seem it would fall under one point one, but you have to come up with language.
Hmm.
Correct.
If we're going to put it in there and it sounds like you don't have language yet.
Well, I have written a language. I, I'm floating it out there. If you want, I'll write a sentence.
Well, we can't vote on it now, so we can consider it and then vote on it next time.
I'll come up with a.
It's an important concept. We should decide if we like or not.
We discussed, we discussed this early on, the whole idea of form-based design. Kind of said yes, and then we said no, and then we said no.
Actually, here's a simple fix. Investigate whether a form-based code or design guidelines are applicable and useful for Greenfield.
Yeah.
That's it.
There you go. And over there, good. And then we get notes.
I think that's.
Sorry, long discussion to get to just to that.
My approach to a plan like this is just make sure that anything that you might want to ever consider is in there. It doesn't matter if it. If, if you're not sure, then you use the word, a word like. Explore, investigate.
It, it's already in that one. So you can say whatever you want, right?
Yeah, so.
You start with that word.
And it could be design guidelines.
I like what you're proposing.
A design review process.
Just say or fine.
Yeah.
Or design.
Yeah, design guidelines or design review process.
Yeah, that gives us some latitude to continue figuring out what's going to work best.
It's important. I, I was just walking down the street, looking at all the signs, just thinking about it when I, you know, when I saw this thing about trying to develop more of a. Facade program and just looking at our storefronts. But I know what the businesses, they have. Backing stuff, a little struggle. But it's, it's not a nice looking downtown as a result.
Right. But there's savings in numbers and if there's some kind of standard, then everybody gets together and pitches in and.
That's right.
You know, gets their little piece of pie.
Modification is to one point, two point. Adding. So whether form-based.
Design guidelines.
And or design guidelines. Is or are applicable and useful for Greenfield.
And that goes to us.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, design guidelines.
You're adding that.
Review process. I don't want to add that other one, but.
We have a designer.
To not believe.
There is a zoning section here too. Somehow we could ban it a little bit. Add some things there too.
Anyway, that's, that's the place.
Jeff, you're adding to one point, one point two, the phrase adding design guidelines is applicable.
Yeah.
We're adding design guidelines after form-based code. So just to get whether it's form-based code. Or adding.
Applicable.
Yeah.
And or design guidelines. Back to the original text of are applicable and useful for Greenfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to clean up our act in town here. Make it look nice.
That's, that's the word. Clean up our act.
We want people to come downtown and enjoy being there.
That's one point three. Clean up, repair and beautify our act.
Oh, but it's true.
Anything else in one point in section one?
I get nothing.
I, I, I don't, I, I had one more thing. I'm just, I put notes all out. I marked the hell out of this thing. Um. The cannabis storefronts. I know it's a state law. You can't. Well, I had it under cleanup and repair one point three. I just had an ordinance about cannabis storefronts that they. Just cannot put black plastic out there that they either. Do something with public art, but that, that one foot. Of between, the one foot inside the glass, it should be something else instead of darkness.
Yeah.
Um, we gotta put, we've got to animate those. I'm sorry, I'm so tired today. I'm very incoherent today. But we have to animate those blackened out storefronts. We're going to let cannabis dispensaries come in our town.
Be a reason to deny a permit.
I, I agree, but we haven't. We've been letting people come in and I understand. I understand landowners have to rent their space. I mean, I'm trying to.
But we can still deny a permit. If someone comes in and says they want to put a cannabis store on our property and they want to put a black storefront, we can say no.
We haven't been.
I'm not sure if we can.
Sure we can, because our, our guidelines say no black storefronts in our town. That's our guideline and they want to put a black storefront in our town. We say no.
But we don't have those design guidelines right now.
We've been trying to get that done. It's one of the things I can send off our agendas and we never get it on the agenda. It's to address that specific issue. Come up with a recommendation that says this. Because I want to do, when we had the discussion, I got all the trouble about, I want to send a letter to the Z. That says, when you go to the special permit for that town. Tell me what to be redesigned.
Yeah.
And you want the, you want the, the, the dispensary to front on the, on the side street. And the other storefront to summer on Main Street. Then you don't have to worry about having a black window. We can do that too.
Also invest in a more attractive window. It's not that complicated.
Well, the design guidelines would address that too.
Exactly.
So if we have the design guidelines somewhere else.
We need to do something before we get to this whole design guidelines. That may never happen. So if we, if it's an issue that we find. Particularly unappeasing, unappealing to us, we need to make a recommendation sooner than later. It says, our zoning law needs to be changed. To cut this into our zoning law.
I would suggest that is a separate issue than.
It is. We came up with a topic. And since you guys have been wandering all over.
If I could finish.
I thought I would want to support that. And we should, we'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
Next, next agenda.
Yeah, but it's, it's, I'm not suggesting it's an invalid topic. I'm just saying it's not an, you have a master plan topic, but it could be put on another. Meeting. And I know it has come up before. It's what you're saying. And it's more urgent than the master plan.
Yeah.
It's, it's can't wait for design guidelines eventually coming up when this is eventually, you know, runs through.
You can't do it retroactively, I assume.
Oh, you're going to send a letter to CPA though.
And, and whether or not, I mean, you know, messing with. Cannabis control commission, all that stuff is tricky enough as it is, but.
Sure.
So I think having, you know, some kind of discussion about this.
It's a, I'm sure.
Collective discussion could be a good.
Topic that we probably realized.
Yeah, so that, that would be good, I think, for.
But it is our downtown.
Yeah, I think, I think the spirit, the spirit of the comment is. In the, the master plan, especially if you have the design guidelines piece, because then that is the mechanism by which we would. Have to establish rules long-term.
Yeah.
And I think if we want to talk about, we could spend some time next meeting if you want to add it to the agenda to.
Like, I'll send you, I could, I can send him an email, right?
You can tell him right now. You can tell him.
Like, I've got four or five things I could put on your agenda. Deal later. You're doing a thing now. So let's finish your thing.
Okay. All right. Anything else in land use chap? All one.
Yes, I do. On the next page. Um. Under.
Please.
One point six. The first implementation action. Um, under the stakeholder, we definitely, if we're talking about protected bike lanes, should include the DPW as a staple. We're not going to have protected bike lanes without the BPW. Um. And likewise for the next one, building a complete safe biking network. That should involve the DPW.
Next one down. First to implementation.
First to under one point six. Okay, so um.
Uh, questions, since we have, since. This is safe pedestrian and bicycle access. Could we put a safe pedestrian and biking network? Could we add pedestrian to that?
Uh.
Oh, oh, okay. This is really, it is only bike lanes, but maybe we add another line.
One of you.
Pedestrian, uh, it's still on one point six that George mentioned with the. Safe biking network and improved bicycle safety. Since. Under the strategy of improve and expand safe pedestrian and bicycle access and public transportation downtown. All of this is about. Bikes. There's nothing in here about pedestrian. Oh, just the last one. See creative solution. All right. I guess that covers. To build a safe pedestrian bicycle path, but that's just Turner's Falls Road. So maybe we add to that mountain road. The last one under one point six.
I actually, before you get into that, I have a. Comment on that, but if we're talking about. Um, you, you want to, you're suggesting add something about safe pedestrian access to downtown. You're saying, right?
That would, yeah, I mean, this, this. The strategy is pedestrian and bicycle and public transportation. It's very heavy towards bicycle. I just want to make sure we have. Pedestrian in there. That's all. That we emphasize that too. It just comes up in the last one. In one location. I just want it more generalized.
Before we get to that, can I just say, there's a few of these I think should be eliminated if I can, in that one point six. So it says, explore the feasibility of creating a Franklin County e-bike share program. I don't think this belongs in this goal, because this goal is about downtown.
Hmm.
I don't think that has anything to do with creating a lively, attractive, accessible downtown. Um, there is in the transportation chapter of the original master plan. There is a uh implementation action about creating, recommending a bike share program. It's an e-bike program, but I don't think, I don't, I think this is a noble idea, but I don't think it belongs in the land use plan. I, I think we should just eliminate that.
Where's it go?
I, I think we should just, it doesn't belong in this chapter. I think we, we just, the lie back. I think it should be in a transportation.
Saying it's already in the account.
It's not an e-bike, but in a bike share program, it's in there. And I think, you know, we can just.
Had you seen this before and just not commented? It just, or just you just noticed it or?
Correct. Yeah, this is my, you know, when I first reviewed it, I didn't, it didn't jump out at me. I would suggest we eliminate the third implementation action under one point six. That's one proposal.
Thank you. Sure.
Um. The similarly, um, the one, two below it where it says, explore whether Deerfield would be interested in collaborating on a bike trail between. Greenfield and Deerfield on Route 510. I am an enormous supporter of that goal. I, I put together a proposal. The first year of the CPA to try to come up with an off-road bike path. Um, between us and old Deerfield. Didn't get funded. But um, I collaborated with people in Deerfield to propose that.
Just do it again.
Yes, but I don't think that is um, it fits under this and it's already an implementation action. It's mentioned in the transportation chapter of the original master plan. So I don't think it belongs here. I don't think it's related to uh the downtown. Uh, a lively, attractive and accessible downtown. I mean, it kind of is in the sense of the access to downtown from Deerfield, but um.
Interesting that it's listed as new, but it's been in the transportation plan.
Yeah, well, they don't, they're not going to catch it. And nor did I.
What's the, what's in the same section, George? What's the feasibility of public transportation bus loop?
Greenfield. Okay, so that one I'm suggesting eliminate because it already exists. Route 21 bus. Goes from the.
That's FRTA, right?
Oh, yeah. And the number 21 bus, these from the transportation, you know, the, the. Drives on, I mean, the older, thank you, over transportation center it goes. It's a loop around Greenfield, 45 minute loop. I've taken it many times.
Actually two, there are two of us.
Well, there, there are multiple, but that, that one is a, is a.
That is.
Is a, you know, public transportation bus loop in Greenfield. And again, I didn't have any catch this, but there are multiple bus loops. I don't think that's. That's realistic to put it in there because a, a, a loop already exists. So I would suggest eliminating that as well. And lastly, the um, the one you referenced, Erica, the last one, see creative solutions to build a safe pedestrian bicycle path. Longer near Turner's Falls Road to increase non-motorized travel to and from Turner's Falls. It's not just increases, it's making it more safe. I've, I've been involved. With the former assistant planner, um, and with Fur Cog multiple times. We've done cleanups on that road. We've done um, surveys on that road. It's, it's like bike and walk that road. It's no clients I work with in my job. Who takes that road. It's incredibly dangerous.
Yeah.
Um, but that's already in here. It's, it's highlighted that particular road as needing attention.
So is there.
And, and I think that's got nothing to do with our downtown.
Is there a way to just make it then more general so it stays there as an action to implement?
I don't think.
Eliminate like Turner's Falls Road, but just say throughout?
I don't think so. I, I think that was, I think it's a good idea. They were just thinking of it, you know, and the students, whoever had a good idea, but it's. It's not part of creating a lively, attractive and accessible downtown. In Greenfield. So I think it's just they were, I think they were trying to throw too many things in there.
Hmm.
So I would eliminate the one about the.
Four, five and six.
Three, four. Uh, and six, correct. I would keep the increased bicycle racks.
Three, four, five and seven.
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry. Yeah, keep the, the bike racks. Let's put it in. I haven't seen the, I have a great new bike rack at the library.
Oh, finally.
Yeah, because they used to have that disc rack one for a long time. They kept saying they were going to get a, a better one. So they finally did. So I would eliminate those um, three, five and seven, because they just don't really belong there as, and they're represented in the. The existing transportation chapter. That's where they belong, to the transportation chapter. And they can be updated in there when we get to that. And um, the number five, uh, four rather, because it already. It's just, it's already, there is such a bus route.
I mean, one thing about these little summary documents with the bullet points is they're kind of. Reminders and so if we also eliminate too much, it gets completely forgotten. And I think that could be one of the reasons they've put it in there. Because it kind of becomes like your cheat sheet, because people always go to this first. The table first.
But that's.
Without reading, without reading. I'm saying for those who don't want to read that stuff, they'll just retake this and.
But this is only one chapter. This is the land use chapter. This is the transportation chapter. And we should be reading all seven chapters. This is not the land use. And this, I mean, this is, and this is about land use of the downtown. We're having bike racks downtown makes sense.
Mm hmm.
But working on Turner's Falls Road doesn't seem to fit.
Yeah, I can, I'm, I'm just in my head. I can see how they came up with that. Again, bringing more people downtown, but whatever.
I apologize because I was on the SGI C and I didn't catch these before, so we're having to do it now.
Anyway, it's fine. Okay.
I'm just proposing, but.
Yeah, no.
So I wanted to kind of get those out of the way because now you're saying. If we're limiting it to one, two and six, then those still don't address the pedestrian part.
Correct.
Or the public transportation part, because that's also listed in the strategy. So.
Is it not the case? You kind of waste your good sentence on the strategy. And you don't have, like, the strategy should also be an implementation action. Uh, you need like a catchall for.
Right.
If, if we have land, if we have the phrase improve and expand, so, you know, everything in one point six. Is that?
Do you need any more detail?
Then it's in there.
Yeah.
We might not have a thing to do quite yet, but that doesn't mean we're not allowed to do anything further besides the three things that are allowed.
Well, but one is the strategy and the other one are the different actions you can take to achieve that.
So there's going to be, there's a bunch of other actions too. These are just the first ones that somebody came up with. As long as it's a strategy and a goal, it's fair game for the future.
Right. We don't need a soft, non-thought-out.
For everything.
Yeah, exactly. You're, you're, it's almost like you're limiting yourself to the three items you're putting.
Yeah, I find.
And you're not. This, this strategy is all you need to know.
You want as much, yeah, you want as much latitude as possible. So this, it's open to interpretation. The, the goals and strategies are very open-ended intentionally. So that whenever we think of a good idea, we can justify it with one of these goals or strategies.
And they should be evolving with time too, from year to year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they are.
And the, the main street redesign is hopefully going to improve. Um, safe pedestrian access.
It's fantastic. It's really good. I looked at it in detail. Safer bikes for, for. Vehicles and for pedestrians. It's actually, it's good. They followed all the good, good design guidelines for safe, complete streets. It's well done.
Okay, anything else for land use plan? I came to land use two.
Now, George, I don't want to, presumably should follow the same thing, which is these things are accomplished. We don't take them out. Because there's a lot of stuff here that was actually just recently done and accomplished. But I think it's important to keep them. On the housing front.
I would think you would take them out. No, if they're accomplished.
You would take them out?
Yeah, I was thinking of taking them out. I was like, yeah, for two, we're moving on to two, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I was.
I mean, it's an impressive, it's an impressive amount of stuff because a lot of stuff's been done here.
Yeah, I was looking at two point one and I was like, a lot of these are just the recent zoning amendments.
Right.
They got done during the process, you know?
Third one we just did.
They, the process, the zoning work, uh. outpaced the plan.
Yeah, that's great.
I do think they should be taken out.
And also the ADU detached ADUs, that's also a lot.
One, two, three didn't get done because you approved that silly house. That's not in place yet. That was another item for the agenda.
So number one under 2.1, allow multi, multifamily dwellings by rights and semi-residential. It is true for up to 24, I think, units, but not for 25 and above.
We tried to get that, but didn't get it pressed.
So it kind of is accomplished.
Leaving in there.
Why would we leave them?
Well, just because it didn't pass this time.
But we kind of, it was like a compromise. I felt. Was it not? I mean.
Well, yeah.
The next one, the next one considered raising the maximum allowed in new multifamily buildings. The present zoning imposed a 24-hour cap. That's done because it was raised above that.
I didn't think it was.
Yeah, it's right. It was approved. It went to 20, it looked in the zoning, it's.
I don't have the.
Eric came up. I had to go, that's, that's allowing like 24 units in one build.
We definitely, I don't think we, we allow more. I forget where we drew the line. Well, so I mean, I guess just a general thought is these are moving targets to try to be precise about exactly. I, I would say that these types of ideas should stay in there because the one thing zoning can be done, it's like it can be done. Need to have the history that these are our zoning priorities. So we can be broader in how we describe it. So it could just be promote multifamily dwellings in corporate zoning districts or something.
Yeah.
Generalize the language, take out the specificity, but maintain the the priorities and probably need to have the same number of, like, like the first four dwellings, that's a very specific idea. At minimum, we should at least just. Again, the goal, the strategy states it pretty well already. Provide zoning ordinance to allow greater density housing in downtown and in the greater downtown area. These are some of the ways to do that. Some of them have been done. Some have been kind of half done. More will come up. We shouldn't strip out too much. We lose the history of support for those ideas.
I think if something's been accomplished, I think it shows we're moving quickly toward these ideas. And I think.
You don't, you don't know that because it's, it's eliminated. When I read this plan and see things that have been accomplished, I feel good. It makes me feel like, okay, why, and we're actually working on some of this stuff and we're making some headway. Not that, oh my gosh, that, isn't that all we've done? Because you lose it.
One, one example is so increased bike racks and other infrastructure in downtown. That's a general way to allow more bike racks. If the, if the idea had been put a better bike rack in front of the library, we would have crossed that off. Bike racks wouldn't be there anymore. So you have to generalize them so that you can keep working towards a broader goal. And there's nothing you can check off quite yet. You don't, I think in the zoning, it's one of these things you don't want to check them off because you're never going to be done with them.
If they're more generalized, I'd be okay with that, but not the way it's currently written.
So you want to revise number one to say promote multifamily housing.
Because this is specific to semi-residential.
Right. So I think the first three at least are too specific to keep in there, given that they've already kind of been addressed and codified in some way.
Like you said, you revise, you keep them, but you revise the wording. So this number three, they promote multifamily housing.
Yeah.
Write that down.
Promote multifamily dwellings. They just take out in semi-residential zone. I guess it'd have to be more promote allows. If you're not being specific about the zone, it's hard to say allow. People would interpret that as everywhere.
I was just talking about using the word promote.
Yeah, okay. So promote multi, so change allow to promote and remove in semi-residential zone.
Where are they now? Not allowed?
In most residential zones, right? And if you go up to three family, you can't go beyond that.
I don't have, I don't have, my heart isn't updated.
They're not allowed by right in, in some places. I also need to, we need to look at the zone to remind myself.
But they are now in some.
Special permit in multifamily dwelling for less than 24 units. It's only allowed in SR and CC. It's not allowed in, well, obviously O and PI, but everything else is special permit. And special permit also for 25 and above.
And the other way that may be more general ways, we don't have to try to actually figure it out right now is just to say, explore more ways to revise zoning to promote more housing production.
And, and the needs evolves and the way people live evolves. So keep it open end.
Yeah. So that's, that's the strategy.
The strategy is saying what you just said.
Yeah, so.
So I don't think we need that implementation act. Strategy is saying revise zoning to allow greater density.
Yeah. So if, if we think that the strategy can stand alone as something to point to and it you know, implementation action doesn't have to be directly tied to it, then.
But it's only in the downtown. Strategy's only in downtown.
And in the greater downtown area.
Yeah. The greater downtown area. Somebody added that.
I guess that might imply, you know, walking or biking distance of downtown.
Yeah, absolutely. So now we're back to deleting one.
I would suggest eliminating one altogether.
Mr. Chair.
Seems like we should eliminate. Therefore, I think need to eliminate the first three.
Well, can we take them one at a time? I mean, number two. That is, what is the now, what is the, the cap? It has been raised.
I didn't think we cut that through. We want to, but we couldn't. We want 24 without, by right, and then additional permit, you can go higher.
That's what it says in here.
If you look under semi-residential, so.
I don't have.
It's quite a special permit for 25. Now, this is the latest one that he handed out last.
But I don't remember what the cap is.
So this is 200 dash 4.5 semi-residential district. Uses 13, B13 is multifamily dwelling in accordance with blah, 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 24 units and below. Amended by City Council on December 18th, 2024. This is by right.
But, but what?
24.
Yeah.
And above it's special permit.
It's special permit.
But what is the cap? What is the above? It's not.
It doesn't say.
25 and above, it's special.
Okay, yeah. So, so this happened. The maximum number of units, a lot of multifamilies was limited. The cap was limited.
The concern I have about pulling some of these things out is that this was a plan.
It's not a plan yet.
I know, but this was, this was, this represents sort of the policy direction that a whole planning process said we should do. We've now embraced pieces of it in zoning, but as you point out, people could push back and want to change. And should this not stay in the plan that was developed? Because presumably you're going to start knocking it off. And in three, three years, some of this will already be done. Do you take it out of the plan then? No. It's just the plan is the plan and you start trying to accomplish it. So the fact that something is early in it done already, I don't know why you take it out of the plan.
My suggestion, my, my answer would be, it's not a plan, it's a proposal. And it, and because this stuff, especially around housing, is moving so quickly.
Right.
This stuff was in the air and this proposal, the actual actions caught up with the proposal. And so this has been done. And so great. And so there's no need to capture this history of, you know, we, we've done it, which is the most important thing. And so we don't need to capture what had been the proposal. We want the plan to be current and future. So we don't want the plan to be historical.
And we've gone back and looked at the rest of this and there's nothing in it that's already accomplished. I mean, we've taken this filter to the rest of the plan.
Well, everything, I'm, I'm just, every time I'm looking at something, whether or not something's happened, that's why I was looking at it. Have we done this?
How about if we worded more? I want to say aspirational, but that's not the right word. How about if we say promote ongoing study? And that, again, that's not the right word, but along those lines, just that we don't lock ourselves in a point in time because we know the needs evolve. And as Greenfield builds, we're going to have to come up, you know, as we move, move forward in the future, we're going to have to stay open and creative to finding new solutions for new needs as they present themselves. So I'm just wondering if.
That goes back, that goes back to the strategy.
Right.
Revised zoning. So it doesn't say revised zoning today. It could say, it just means if something comes up next year, you revise it again. So it's.
So this is, okay.
Yeah, the implementation.
What would be the action of that? Promoting that? Looking at, I had, I noted in a couple of places, look at it, look at a tax incentive for the creation of an accessible. I'm giving an example, accessible ADU. I had another thing, can study tax incentives for green gardens, rain gardens, I mean, to keep people from putting some pump water into the sewer. I mean, I'm just wondering if we, because some of these do have assess study the feasibility of XYZ. I'm wondering maybe if we turn that around like that.
Well, you.
As an action, again, as an action item.
Sounds like you're proposing a different.
I was just giving examples.
You're proposing a different strategy. The strategy is revise zoning. And the next one is about barrier-free housing specifically. And those are the two under this increased housing stuff.
But the, the, those are just examples. Maybe there's a way we can phrase something here that addresses what you're saying. And at the same time.
My approach to Greenfield did a housing plan. It, it's customary to reference other plans in this document. So this document doesn't have to replicate everything that was in a much longer plan, just like we did for the open space recreation plan. So there's a plan that is presently, I don't know how adopted it is, but it's the policy of the economic development department. My firm authored, I must disclose, I'm only suggesting that because that's there's a lot in there.
Let's reference it.
It might be a shortcut to some of this stuff because it has a bunch of things in it. So the same feature for transportation plan, there's a parking plan that was done recently. So if the town has invested in planning and any of these topics, we don't need to rehash that. We can just point to it.
Totally agree. So we just reference it.
So that, that would be an implemented, implementation action could be implement, whatever it said for the open space recreation.
Implement recommendations of the Greenfield Housing Plan.
And what is the status of that plan? Like you say, the, it's been.
I don't think it's been formally adopted. They're, they're not always formally adopted. A lot of times a plan like that is just meant to be the, you know, today's policy perspective or, or it's data to inform specific decisions. It's been used to make decisions, to justify decisions.
And it was, it was, who?
Missioned by.
Yes, commissioned.
Missioned by the Economic Development, by Amy, over the Economic Development Department. It wasn't planning or another group. And it was funded by a state grant. I forget.
Which, it was a.
Urban agenda or?
Yeah, yeah. Small city. I, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. I know the answer to this, but could you share that with the rest of us?
The report or?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a website. Yeah, sure.
So if you don't mind me going back to the topic at hand. I understand, I understand where George is coming from. We've got the strategy in place. Items one and two were specific implementations that were written at the time this plan, this, what did you call it, a plan? What'd you call it? Proposal?
Proposal.
This proposal was done. Those specific implementations have been accomplished. So we can take those off. Doesn't mean that we forget about because the strategy references them anyway. There's revise, so we could talk. So I understand what you're saying. I kind of agree with things that were listed here that have been specifically done. This specific item has been accomplished. So I don't see why we can't delete one and two. Three was not done.
I don't think so, man.
Okay, because we have an issue with that.
But then we can eliminate seven too.
So one and two, I think we can delete. If you don't, if you agree, Jeff. I was, they were specific items and they were specifically done. You can always add something later.
If we invoked something bigger, like the housing plan in this case, then it captures ideas like this. I, I would feel that there are, that those are being carried forward by this plan, just as the open space recreation plan.
One and a new one that says to reference that.
Probably someone else should make that suggestion because I'm too close to that.
But so, so one and two, we're going to agree on, and three is still active. Because we had that with another discussion, we had probably the Economic Development Committee. We're going to sit down with the plan and we're going to draw a line that says, this is where you cannot have ground for housing. And we didn't do that there.
Yeah.
Got to do that.
And I think, I think it is good to have, rather than just generally reference, oh, see this plan. I think there's value in that. But I think something like this, which feels, you know, I, I think there's value in having certain things specifically. And I'll just mention as an aside that I think it was at the end of the last city council meeting, Councilor Healy touched on, I think this is what he was talking about and wanting to bring this forward to get addressed because this was a, something he wanted to champion as well. So I think it's the very issue you're talking about. So we might be hearing about that. So mention that.
Sure.
Can I ask? I know you had mentioned at the last meeting, you want to wrap this up at this meeting. I wanted to ask how long we want to handle tonight?
So my plan was to.
Was it me who said that?
I think so.
You're looking at me. Especially because we don't have an action to endorse, approve, is it approved?
No, we would be voting on, yes, approving this. And yes.
I think, and it sounded, so I, being late, we have more sections. So I was going to suggest we get through land use two and then go home. And then it sounded like, Erica, you were maybe going to work on a couple of things. We, we have a little more to think about and then we have a few more pieces to get.
I think we already added the line about the design guidelines. We already added it.
And then we can put on the next agenda, an action item to vote on.
If I can suggest, I mean, land use two, I mean, it, oh yeah, land use two, I'm sorry. Land use three is next page. Okay. Sorry.
Where, where are we? Do we, I assume we want to get rid of the accessory dwelling unit one?
Yes, and the open space cluster development.
Yes, so that's seven and eight.
Seven and eight, I think, should be deleted.
And it changes to four, five and six. Really knows that's done, so we need to work on that.
The row houses, that had come up. I was trying to remember. I was going to check that.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, George?
Uh, one, two, three, four. Number five about the row houses.
Oh, the row houses, yeah.
Did that get to be, hold on that, that could come up, right? I know there's been so many things. I'm not sure. Eric, can you help us? Unless you guys are.
I thought we allowed single-family downtown, but not on the main street or something.
The thing with row houses, it's just.
I was asking about row houses.
Yeah.
I don't think we did anything with row houses because it's just basically another style of a multifamily. It's like a, it's like a 40-unit multifamily. It's a little bit like 25 in the multifamily, right? Row house.
It doesn't, well, no, it has to do with the, it's, it's the setbacks also. If you have, if you have setbacks required on the side, you can't do row houses. And the thing with row houses, building row houses sometimes is a lot cheaper because you don't need an elevator. Somebody's entering the ground floor and you have multi-story and you can make it narrow and long and, and it's.
We didn't do any of that.
It's a great, well, we, we can't do them here. So we'd have to get that into, so that needs to stay here.
Okay.
So we know which ones to cut?
One, two, seven and eight is what I have. It's just the.
I agree.
Are we adding anything?
Uh, yes.
Oh.
Did, did we want to add something like implement the suggested actions included in the 2024 or 2025, whatever year it was, housing study?
That's what you're proposing.
Yeah, that's the line you're proposing.
That is what I guess what I'm proposing.
Yeah.
Okay, can you word that again for me, Sarah? Say it again for me.
Um, implement the actions.
I, I. But we're not both.
It's a very good plan.
E-housing study.
I'm disagreeing. We're not voting, so. Is there a date on that?
I don't remember what year it was, 2024 or 2025.
Well, there was an addendum in 2025, so call.
2025.
2025. By Jeff's company.
Yes, I should say. I have a real interest in whether or not. We need that. Okay. So I mean, now that I'm looking at what three, four and five are there, maybe pretty quick. We just want to check them off real quick. I guess let me just ask if people had significant amounts of comments on three, four and five.
Did we talk about two point two?
Yeah, I, I just want to add two point two, uh, consider an accessible ADU tax incentive.
Do you still talk about three, four and five on the section two?
Oh, I thought we jumped.
The numbering is, yeah, there's, well. I was, I was. Okay, I guess we're on land use two point two.
Two point two, okay.
Okay, that's where I'm saying, do we want to put a tax incentive? Assess the feasibility of a accessible ADU tax incentive.
ADU tax incentive.
Accessible, accessible. ADU tax.
And why?
Just trying to get people to, to build those things. I mean, it was, it's such an easy, it's a low, for me, it's a low hanging fruit. Add grades, accessible standalone detached AD unit. It could either be a garage conversion or just completely new construction. But it's so easy to make an add grade in your backyard accessible unit. And I'm just finding, because it's so hard, so costly to build right now and maybe it makes sense since we want so much housing to consider, is it feasible to have a small tax incentive that over X amount of years, we reduce your property taxes on that unit for X amount of years, kind of like federal tax credits or whatever, but anyway, that's, I'm just throwing it out there.
If we had. Would that be our top priority for where to put it?
What do you mean for where to put it? Oh, oh, that, you mean in here.
Well, you're, yeah, you're proposing to use a tax incentive. Is that where I would want to put it? I'm not sure. I would say that's.
The best plan.
We haven't really thought about it. I mean, tax breaks.
No, you made a good point. So maybe since it comes up in other areas of these recommendations, assessing feasibility of tax incentives or financial things, whatever, maybe we put it under the housing stock somewhere as a general thing. It is something to consider.
You can use the word incentivize. It might be a little easier.
Yeah, incentivize.
That can mean a lot of things.
That's already in.
We have to check if it's feasible. So that would be an act, an act.
That's already in two point two point one. Advocate for state and local programs to incentivize rental property owners directed.
Okay.
Or existing, and you could add something about ADUs.
Rental property, just say rental property.
It says existing.
I'm looking for new.
I'm saying you could, you could amend that sentence.
Yeah, okay.
To include that.
Yeah.
Potentially.
That, that's fine.
It's an ADU, so rental property. We want to just change it to where? Retrof.
Well, that's planned.
I don't know if you want to try to wordsmith that right now or it seems like it could fit in there.
So where?
Point two, point one.
You say to provide barrier free rentals.
Yeah.
The owner is to provide.
Or create.
Provide rentals with accessible features such as, let's just say to provide rentals. Owners to provide rentals with accessible features such as, that would cover everything, right?
Yeah.
Are you talking about ADUs as rental properties?
Just in general.
So you could say something like incentivize owners to retrofit existing rental properties? Or um,
No, I think to your point, it doesn't have to be.
It just provide rentals. Someone builds an ADU to rent it, that should be, they should then try to make it, try to make it accessible.
But you're speaking to not just ADUs for rental, you're speaking to ADUs, whether they be rental or, or for sale.
But this is.
Or rentals. I, I guess I'm, if I could finish this, it doesn't sense. You could say advocate for state or local programs to incentivize uh, owners to retrofit existing rental property um, with accessible features such as blah, blah, blah. Or for the creation of new ADUs with similar features.
Existing or create new, I would just keep it simple. Either or.
But you're not.
You were saying just eliminate completely. Don't distinguish between a new or a retrofit.
But are you talking about rental price? I'm just trying to distinguish. You're talking about rental. Is that what the incentive is or?
It doesn't even matter rental or not because my point is that somebody owns a big house, might want to downsize and move into an accessible ADU and then rent that big house. So, and they're still the owner of the property and I'm trying to catch all of that.
Yeah, I think, I think we're just talking about rentals. We're not talking about new ones for sale. I think this, I don't think that's what we're talking about. Telling people they're going to build. Most people aren't going to sell an ADU. It's on their carpet. That's not going to happen.
I think you could interpret the way it's written and do what you're saying. That exist, adding ADU is retrofitting an existing property. But.
Very good.
There you go. There you go. I like that.
I think you could remove the word rental. We, it's not like we don't want people to retrofit their own houses. That's the thing too. So maybe remove the word rental and add to owners to retrofit existing properties or build new with accessible features such as is that, that seems to cover everything?
Yeah.
What we're taking here?
Just take out the word rental and say we're building new.
And you're hoping to have ADU flag particularly?
No, there was, well, there was a separate line for the. Barrier fee. Well, this is all about barrier. No, it doesn't. I, I think it doesn't have to be separate.
I think personally ADU is overly specific.
Yeah, I.
You can add a unit to a house. I guess you have, you could call it ADU, you could not call it ADU. And it had the same impact.
All right. So let me just read it to myself. So advocate for a state or local program to incentivize property owners to retrofit existing properties or build new with accessible features such as. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it?
Okay.
The only other thing in this section I had is the last two point two point four. And this is just under stakeholder. I thought in addition to housing greenfield and economic development, uh, since it's talking about increasing resources and programs for the housing population, we should include human service organizations. And also the mayor's office, as I know, obviously those kind of organizations, the one, the resources and programs. And um, the mayor's office is very involved with.
And human resources what?
Organizations.
Human resource.
Human services.
Human services organizations. And the mayor, I would suggest. I don't know how much.
The mayor called that anywhere else in this? Oh, yeah, it is. Okay, I see.
And I wanted to suggest, I know we have a page and a half left. I know on the next page, there's some cleanup needs to happen. I know there's a couple of places where there's just, you know, things are repeated and there's one where in parentheses says still needs to be working. Um, so I want to suggest we we call it at this point and uh, we're going to come back to the next, next month anyway. So I, I sent some fatigue and we're, we're obviously working hard on this and I would suggest we call it night, but.
I think yes. And if we could have very specific, if people could look at this over the next month and, and come back with specific language to, to talk through, we could probably cut through the last few sections pretty quick. So then for the agenda.
Victor's added something to the agenda.
No, I'm going to send them, I'm going to send you an email with a couple of items.
You can mention it here. I mean, it's okay to, to mention the topic without.
Do any agenda where that actually fits.
Can I just, so I know I don't have anything else I have to do. We, we did add the design guidelines. And I don't have to write anything for that. That's done. Yeah, I just want to mention. Coming back and not having done my homework.
But the Potenskis are staying in the farm.
And I wanted to suggest for next time that um, uh, either the apartments, chair's appointments to um, the sustainable greenfield implementation committee and the um, CPC. Make those appointments. The um, community preservation committee and the master plan.
So review the board representation on other committees on.
Yes, just those two.
I was going to say other committees.
My apologies for going on and on about the right away on that property boundary. I was trying to get these neighbors to find a solution.
It wasn't, it wasn't the neighbors. It was the, she wasn't taking issue with the neighbors, I don't think.
She was, I own that or I don't own it. Well, I couldn't.
I know she wasn't taking the hint. It's, we can't.
Number fourth, six P M. Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Favor?
Yes.
Thank you.